Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the October 4th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting to order. The main purpose of tonight's meeting is to hold a study session on the 2024 Imagine Bothl Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update, Climate, Natural Environment, Shorelines, and Parks Element. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our hybrid meeting format. The city of Bothl is providing the option to attend this meeting both in person and virtually by Zoom. For those on Zoom, please note that the chat and Q&amp;A features are not enabled in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Public comment and hearing testimony will be allowed tonight, both in person and online with Zoom. Those wishing to comment via Zoom or in written comments were asked to submit an online form by 3:00 P.M. today. Email was encouraged as well and will be acknowledged. Those in attendance tonight may make comments, and those wishing to comment were asked to indicate their desire to comment on the sign-in sheets. The Imagine Bothl notice, the city website, and tonight's agenda all provided information to the public for providing comments. Tonight's meeting will be streamed live, as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for the members of the public who wish to call in by phone and listen live to our meeting. For our dial-in callers during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they're referencing verbally, so everyone can follow along. At this point, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the attendance of tonight's meeting. Chair Kiernan is absent and excused, and as Vice Chair, I, Commissioner Kurd, will be guiding the procedure of the meeting. When I call your name, please test your mic. Commissioner Jones?
Uh, present.
Great. Commissioner Westerback is absent and excused. Commissioner Robson?
Present.
Commissioner Anders?
Present.
And Commissioner Gustafson?
Present.
In addition, we have some people from the city of Bothl. We have Community Development Director Jason Greenspan, Deputy Public Works Director Steve Morikawa, we have Senior Planner Kristen Mant. Uh, I think we have Community Engagement Specialist Sarah Frost in the building, and we also have Civic Sparks Fellow Emily Nielsen. Lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines for all attendees. Please speak clearly and pause frequently. Please state your name each time before you speak and mute your microphone when not speaking. If you're also streaming the live feed, please turn off the sound as there is a delay. For commissioners at specific breaks in the presentation, I will be calling on members who wish to speak or ask a question. If you want to speak, please indicate that by raising your hand. This is going to help avoid the problem with two people speaking at the same time. Identify yourself before you ask a question, make or second a motion, or participate in debate. And again, please mute your microphone when not speaking. The first item on our agenda tonight is public comment. This is time for comments about issues not on tonight's agenda. The city has accepted visitor comment in writing, as well as accepted signup sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, and no written comments were submitted to staff since our last meeting, so... I don't think we have any members in the audience who wish to speak. So... Are there any Zoom commenters? Zoom? Nope, I'm getting, uh... No Zoom commenters this evening. All right, moving along, the next item on our agenda is a study session about the 2024 Imagine Bothl Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update, Climate, Natural Environment, Shorelines, and Parks.
Let me get my presentation back up. One second. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Kurd. As Commissioner Kurd mentioned, we'll be talking about the climate element, the natural environment element, the shoreline master program element, and the parks, recreation, and open space elements. And then, um, a little bit later on in the beginning of the presentation, our Civic Spark fellow Emily Nielsen will give a little short overview on herself and the program and what she'll be working on with us. So as a reminder of where we are in the timeline, we've now shifted on down into Q4. A big piece of work right now is reviewing the existing conditions report, and that is existing conditions for all aspects of the plan and all the things we're going to be reviewing as part of the EIS. As a part of that as well, we're starting to draft goals and policies, reviewing those, revising existing ones, creating new ones, getting ourselves prepped for the preliminary draft environmental impact statement, and then our ongoing engagement work, again, as a plug for the open house. And I can talk a little bit more about that. We did get a chance to go visit the facility today. Uh, it's going to be at Skyview Middle School from 5:00 to 8:30. Come when you want, leave when you want. There'll be ice cream. I think it's a edible cookie dough and ice cream truck that will be there, or either a truck or a catering-style facility. Um, there's going to be childcare and also activities for kids are partnering with the, I think it's called the Imagination Museum in Everett for that, so that's really exciting. On the 31st, we'll just be hosting a table at Trick or Treat on Main Street. This will just be a pretty light touch. We'll be there to answer questions, provide materials, get people engaged with the hybrid version of the open house that we'll hopefully have up by then. We want to make sure there's an online version for folks to attend if they would like. Um, and then we'll also be attending the next two Civic Saturdays sessions on November 18th, which will be about civic spaces. And then we'll facilitate a discussion at the end, so those are also really casual, uh, events. You don't have to come at the beginning. If you just wanted to come for the comp plan stuff, you can come then. It'll sort of be like a chat with a planner at the end of the Civic Saturdays, and then on the 20th in January. And right now, our timeline is having us have our second open house in March. And that's, we're going to try and have that coincide with the release of the public drafts, but we have to kind of finalize some of the details of how that rollout's going to happen. So more to come on that space, but just know that that will be coming. And again, another update on just reminding folks of upcoming meeting dates and topics. Obviously, tonight, we're meeting with the Planning Commission to talk about climate, natural environment, shorelines, and parks. Uh, these are all the upcoming dates as well. These dates are also on the comp plan landing page of the city's website, as well as on EngageBothl.com, if you want to take a look at that. Um, the next big one coming up for city council will be on the 17th, talking about land use and housing, and that will include a discussion of the growth targets and the future land use map, and how we're going to be trying to accommodate the growth that's coming and assigned to us by the state, and then also a discussion on the economic development element. So a quick overview of tonight, um, I'll pass things over to Emily in a minute to do her intro, and then we're going to talk a little bit about best available science. What is it? What does it do? Why is it important for this discussion? Discussing the environmental review process and the timeline for that and where we are at with that. Uh, revisions to the draft climate element that you all saw in June, um, that we integrated into a new draft. The, discuss a little bit about the natural environment element, some of the direction and recommendations for how to revise that element, and then the same kind of thing with parks, rec, and open space. I've had a chance to talk to the parks director on that, so he's given me some feedback on that direction, and then the shoreline master program element. So that, I'm going to pass things on over to Emily.
Hi, everyone. Um, I'm Emily. I usually hear pronouns. Um, I'm originally from the San Francisco Bay Area, Alameda, and I'll be working in the Community Development Department for the next 11 months or so as a Civic Spark fellow um, on the climate outreach and community, or sorry, climate element and community outreach, uh, in the department. I'm going to go to the next slide. Um, so I'll talk a little bit about the fellowship in a little bit, but a bit more background on me. As I said, I'm from Alameda, and so I've gotten to work on a couple of different projects with the city of Alameda, including most recently residential building decarbonization. Um, also, at school, at Seattle University, I was involved with the Center for Environmental Justice and Sustainability, where I got to do a lot of communications work, doing event planning, waste auditing, um, and also got to help out with updating their climate action plan. Uh, most recently, last summer, I worked at Holden Village up in the Cascades as the registrar and got to be involved in the process of updating their wildfire evacuation plan. So through these experiences, I've gotten really interested in planning specifically as it relates to, uh, climate and community resilience efforts. Um, so it was perfect that I found the Civic Spark Fellowship, because next slide. Civic Spark is a AmeriCorps program that is dedicated to building capacity for local public agencies to address community resilience issues. Perfect. Um, so we'll go to the next slide. Um, so Civic Spark started in 2014. They just recently celebrated their 10-year anniversary birthday. Um, and so communities' resiliency projects within Civic Spark include climate action and adaptation, equity and access, and resource management projects. Um, and so all of the projects you see listed on here are projects that are either currently being worked on or are being, uh, have been worked on in the past. So we have city, state, and county level. Um, you'll notice the last resource management section is in California. That's because Civic Spark started in California, um, in 2014. So, next slide. Um, but Civic Spark has since expanded, uh, just recently, actually, last year, I believe, was the first time that, uh, fellows were introduced in Washington and Colorado. Um, so this year, there are 135 fellows that are serving, 100 in California, 15 in Colorado, and 20 in Washington. Here, you can see most of our beautiful faces. There's been a few new additions. And so, yeah, I'm really excited to be, uh, engaged in this program for the next 11 months and to be learning a lot. And if you have, yeah, any questions about the program or for me, I'll be here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Really excited to have her in the added capacity. It's a big help to our team for comp plan, so very grateful for that. All right, so moving on, again, no specific action tonight, just looking for feedback, like I mentioned, on the revised draft. Hopefully, you see your comments reflected in there. We tried hard to make sure we were taking everything we heard from you folks and council and the public and really integrating that into the new draft. And it should be in, it's in the new template that we're working on too for how that, all the elements will be looking as well. So if there's feedback on that too, we'll welcome that. So best available science. What is BAS? It's been a GMA requirement since 1995. Uh, that was a new revision after the adoption of GMA. Basically, all it is, is it mandates that we include a baseline of best available science to provide guidance when we're developing policies and regulations around critical areas. So it includes research conducted by qualified professionals. There's guidance from the Department of Commerce, the Department of Fish and Wildlife, um, the Department of Ecology. They all, it all kind of basically comes together into a document that serves as a resource when we're putting together all of the policies and regulations that come from the comp plan. There's five topic areas, uh, in the best available science. That's wetlands, critical aquifer recharge areas. So that's all of the, especially here, we have a lot of aquifers within the city. Fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas, frequently flooded areas. We have a couple of those. And then geologically hazardous areas. We also have some of those down in the south. So the infographic on the right is meant to kind of show the baseline of the best available science. Um, obviously, it underpins anywhere we have environmental-related policy within the plan, but obviously, the primary ones are the shoreline master program element, the natural environment element, and then our new climate element. And then when we go to draft our regulations, which the primary critical area regulations are in titles 13 and 14. 13 has shoreline regulations, as well as critical areas regulations specific to the shoreline environments, and then Title 14, which is our citywide critical areas ordinance. So that's kind of the flow of how all these things work together. And I wanted to provide an example of one of the sections from the best available science. It's a, it's not a super-long document. It's about 40 pages. But just an idea of how those sections break down. So one is the functions and values section. So that's looking at how do we measure water quality? How do we measure when some, when the functionality of the hydrologic condition is there? And what is the habitat functionality? And all of those things, when we're looking at the code, so titles 13 and 14, uh, result in how we qualify a wetland. So there's different types of wetlands from type 1 to type 4, and that has to do with basically the overall quality of it. And these are some of the elements that go into determining that on the forms we get from, uh, biological, biologic professionals that do those evaluations for us. And then this BAS had a climate change, uh, kind of leaned to it because we have a new climate element. So that was an emphasis in this best available science. So there's a section talking about how climate change specifically affects wetlands. And then what are the protective measures to help combat both the climate change-related effects, but then also the overall, how do we make sure that we're maintaining the function and value and not creating any net loss for the function values of wetlands? And that includes the resiliency strategies for climate. And then how do we determine buffers based on the value of that wetland, the function of value? So the different types of wetlands have different buffers. And then when we want to require mitigation for a buffer area, what does that look like? And on the right is just a picture of what, uh, mapped wetlands look like in our mapping software, if you haven't seen it. With the green part being the buffer and then the hatched part being the wetland itself. This one's kind of a strange example because it's a wetland that existed probably before we had regulations. So we see these all over the place, but, yeah, just as an example. And then the environmental review process. So this is what is better known as an environmental impact statement process, or that's the review process for this kind of project. An EIS is instigated when there's a likely known probable impact that will result from a project that we know, regardless of the alternative, it's going to have some kind of an impact. So it provides this comprehensive evaluation, uh, with the backing of the best available science to understand what are those likely significant and adverse environmental impacts of a potential project. So it analyzes those impacts or the probable impacts, and then proposes different alternatives and the mitigation. So it's sort of getting at what is the best right answer of these different alternatives we had to have to achieve a project, and based on the types of impacts from those alternatives and the available mitigation, what makes the most sense and what is most backed by the scientific evaluation. The process for the EIS starts with issuing that determination of significance. That is the trigger for the EIS. Typically, with SEPA, if it's not determined to be significant, it will be either a determination of non-significance or a mitigated determination of non-significance, if it's determined that the significant impacts can be mitigated outside of an EIS process. Usually, the determination of significance is also issued as part of the scoping notice, which is the process that we have followed, and the scoping is really asking the public, different lead agencies, tribes, what should we study in the project scope? This is what we think we should study in the project scope. But is there anything we're not missing? Is there anything you want to make sure that we include? Um, and so we'll hear back. We think we ought to comment from WashDOT on some topics that were of interest to them and some, uh, members of the public as well. And that was a 30-day comment process, and then after that is when we start drafting the draft EIS. So that's when we're taking our, our alternatives. We're really developing the potential probable impacts of those and analyzing those, and also analyzing potential mitigation measures. Um, that will be issued also with a public comment period. It will be a 45-day comment period. We're anticipating that that process will start at the end of January and run until mid-April. And then ultimately, where you get to is your final EIS, so that's where you're getting what's called your preferred alternative, and you have done any additional analysis that may have come out of the DIS process, any comment we received. And then you were saying this is the preferred alternative that we're going to act on, and these are the ways we're going to provide mitigation. So the goal of the EIS process is to allow for that participation, both from the public, the tribes, and any other agencies that we work with, and that includes transit agencies, other jurisdictions. Pretty much, it's a very, very long list, as you might imagine. And, um, so the goal is to improve proposals to be as environmentally sound as possible and to provide that environmental information for decision-makers such as you all, um, and providing necessary information for action on a proposal to make sure that we are getting at that best right answer as part of this whole process. And a timeline for the EIS, like I mentioned, we finished the scoping period. Um, we're currently reviewing existing conditions, and that's another requirement as part of the EIS process to evaluate. What are the existing conditions, and they're based on that? What does that no-action alternative look like in terms of environmental impact as compared to an action alternative? Um, and then, like I mentioned, we're working on the preliminary DEIS development. That will, uh, hopefully be done for release in January for the DEIS, and like I mentioned, a 45-day comment period. Oh, and I misspoke. I think the prior timeline we had was the end of January. Now it's the end of February. I believe we're aiming to release it on leap year day and end it on tax day. I don't think that was, that was by accident. Uh, so now getting into the actual elements. So, and I do want to call out that we, these icons that are in here, we had a graphic designer that, as a subconsultant for our consultant, put these together. So we now have icons for all the elements that are really great. Uh, there's black and white ones and color ones, so we can kind of switch it up as we want, and those will really help us to cross-reference within the plan when you can see where things are that might have an impact on different topic areas.
If I can interrupt you, I'm, I'm feeling a little slow on the uptake. When you're talking about the environmental impact study and such and such, what, what project are we talking about? Are we talking about the environmental impact of this, our new strategic plan? Are we talking about the land use? Which, I'm thinking of this, that it, you do an environmental impact of a particular project, but certainly, I can't imagine the, like, making ourselves more racially sensitive is going to have a huge environmental impact. So what project specifically are we, are we talking about land use development?
It's for all of the comp plan and...
For the whole thing?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
Yes, yeah, and the, the, the scope of the plan includes things like racial equity impacts, um, because the scope of what is considered environmental impact is pretty broad in the context of SEPA. It includes aesthetics, as well as things like the, you know, wetlands and things like that.
Okay. And we don't have the plan finalized yet, but we, uh... So when does this, forgive me, I'm so sorry. Uh, so when do we do the, is the environmental study started now, even though the plan is not finalized?
Yeah, so the goal of scoping, for example, that's laying out all the topic areas within the plan that we will evaluate for, for it being consistent with the EIS. So that's why the, the value of the scoping period is to make sure that we're covering everything we think needs to be covered in order for the comprehensive plan to be able to be adopted and pass that test of the EIS process. Yeah, so it is a very broad-reaching EIS, and not all EISs are that broad.
Yeah, yeah, that's what was throwing me, I think.
Yeah, exactly. It's, it's probably the biggest type of EIS I could think you could do at a state level. But there are also EISs for federal environmental review, but thankfully, that's not something I have had to deal with, so.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Yeah, for sure. So I did want to remind, um, everyone of the feedback we did get back in June, just since it's, it's been some months. Um, so I was just going to kind of go through on a topic-by-topic basis the feedback I heard and some of the notes that we took. Um, so when we, we were talking about the climate element vision, we heard there's some confusion about what does mobility really mean versus connectedness? So we were going to try and go back to the drawing book a little bit and clarify that. Um, generally, it seemed like a long list, so we were going to look at kind of cutting that down. For the mitigation sub-element, uh, we wanted to basically make the language around climate change more forthright, strengthen that. Um, and so we heard that loud and clear, and we're doing some revisions there. Uh, pulling the GHG emissions into, uh, the main mitigation sub-element language itself, rather than as something separate with something we heard. Uh, there's feedback about including some language around food waste reduction, potentially food waste reduction programs or education. And then a comment that, I wanted to capture this, even though it might not be something at this phase of the project, but something about potentially looking at requiring demo plans at building permit phase. I could see that as being a potential mitigation or implementing measure. Regarding food systems, there was some feedback around considering zoning regulations that might permit smaller-scale grocers in more areas of the city, including business parks and neighborhoods. Again, that would probably be like recommended action or implementation policy we could associate with a goal or policy that we would then look at doing, um, after the plan. In terms of building and energy, there was an ask to clarify acronyms, which I had also made a note, we need to be really careful about throughout the plan. I know there's a section in the existing conditions report for acronyms, so I think it will be key to have something like that in the plan itself, so people, what is that acronym? I don't understand this. Um, and then some kind of policy or implementation for helping homeowners retrofit older homes for adaptation. I think this comment was specific to both energy and also potentially stormwater. So that's something, uh, keeping in mind for potentially a policy that we can then make actionable through an implementation measure. On the economic development section, there was an ask to clarify language about adaptation of outdoor recreation sites and why that was intended to be a climate-related policy, so that's something we definitely heard. Um, there was a comment about encouraging building type diversity. I believe that was from Commissioner Westerback. Um, so that's something we're thinking about as well. Uh, clarifying what is meant by a green job and what, what our role would be in that space, as well as the potential for trying to provide more potable water for the public in our public-facing spaces. And so I don't know if you'd prefer we can stop here and just speak on the climate element or move on towards it and make more sense to talk about it now.
Um, yeah, I want to see, thank you for the presentation so far. Uh, I want to see if people have, uh, commissioners have any specific comments about the climate, um, change uh, in resiliency, um, part of the presentation or the memo first before we continue moving on. If we don't have comments, that's all right too, but just want to have a moment, make things through.
And I do just also want to remind everyone, you're always welcome to email comments to me too at any time. I'll always keep those and scroll them away in all my topics folders and talk to the consultant about them as well. So if things do come up after the meeting, you can always email me.
Great. I'm not seeing anybody raise their hand, but, um, certainly, if something comes to you during the presentation, I, we can jump back a little bit to keep it kind of informal. Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, um, by Sherkurd, thanks for asking that. That helps me realize, I have a question. The best available science report that's in our agenda, is that considered part of the climate change discussion of tonight? Or is it considered part of the natural environment? Because it says climate change, but it looks very much natural environment.
Yeah, so it's for everything. So best available science is required by the state to be adopted when you have, uh, critical areas-related policies and regulations. So it's sort of the scienti- scientific underpinning of creating policy and regulations. So anywhere within the plan and anywhere within our regulations where we talk about, uh, critical areas, that is what it's required for. And the reason it's, has a climate bent to it is because we have a climate element and we want to strengthen climate in the context of critical areas. And so that's why we have those additional sections specific to how those critical areas are affected by the climate, by climate change. Yeah, there you go.
Yes, Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Commissioner Kurd. Um, I'm not sure, uh, I'm not sure if we're, we can ask questions or make comments about appendix, I think it's the first appendix, or if we're only making comments about the proposed changes based on the last meeting. And I want to apologize upfront because I wasn't at the last meeting, so that's why I'm not sure if I can still ask questions about the main components of the climate.
Uh, I would say you could provide comment on any of the materials that we provided.
Okay, so, um, one of the questions I had, and it's really, I'm just trying to understand why this decision was made. Um, there's a section, I think it's on page 12, uh, it's, it's the continuation of the future needs. And it says that while there is a risk of fire in Bothl, the primary wildfire risks are in the Cascades, however, wildfire smoke, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Completely agreed about wildfire smoke being an issue. But I do wonder, um, what the, what influence, um, the exclusion of wildfire risk to building property, et cetera, as part of the overall element? Um, and I do understand that certainly, I, I certainly understand that the risk is lower on this side of the Cascades. However, we do have urban forests within the city of Bothl. We, um, are encouraging more tree canopy. Um, there, it, it, I'm just curious as to why the decision was made to exclude that.
That is a question I'll probably want to clarify with our consultant that's working on this. My assumption, which may or may not be fully correct, is the urban fire wildlife, uh, blanking on the name, but there's mapping.
The, the UI?
Interface, that's the word I was looking for. Uh, the urban wildlife interface maps that we've received, I believe, f- from a state agents, from DNR, uh, haven't indicated that risk within the city, and I would assume that that is where that recommendation came from. Um, but I will certainly write that down to talk to with a consultant, see if I can get a clearer answer, unless, if my assumption's incorrect.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that because I think, I think a question could come up, you know, it's one of those things where, um, we anchor on what's currently happening, and because we've had wildfire smoke episodes for several summers, you know, it's in our mind. Um, but the minute that we have some sort of fire in one of the forests, hopefully we'll ask, well, why wasn't this included as part of the element? Or why, why didn't we think about this? Because this is a plan looking forward, right? So, and we know that the climate risks are going to increase, so, um, I think it might help in terms of clarification. I had, Commissioner Kurd, if it's okay, I have another, um...
Yes, please continue.
Question? Question?
Mm-hmm.
So on page fifteen, under the goals and policies mitigation sub-element, I think this was the section where, um, the commission previously made some suggestion. Uh, it says climate change is a phenomenon that atmospheric and climate experts agree is exasperated. Now it says is exasperated by greenhouse gas emissions and could lead to significant adverse impacts, et cetera, et cetera. I'm wondering about the two words could lead, um. It's, it still implies that there's a question, um, as to the impacts from climate change. And I was wondering if there's any thought to maybe changing that language a bit.
Heard, yeah, I can, I hear that. Yeah, thank you for that feedback. That's something I can also take back to our team as well.
Any other feedback on this section before we continue on? Yes?
This isn't.
Commissioner Robson?
Um, I'm actually just wondering how far are we going into the draft and whether or not we wanna keep the, um, climate section versus natural environment, like versus, um, the changes you made to this draft and how we wanna separate those two out. Um, I do have some notes, but I don't wanna jump ahead.
No, let's go through it right now, I think, so that we can move, we can kind of compartmentalize. So now's a great time to do that.
Okay.
Okay, um, I had, uh, a few questions, um, particularly, let me see where's a good place for me to start, um. It does seem like there, um, are some, um, geez, uh, a few little hiccups in maybe the way that this, um, could, it could use some clarity, or I guess I, I, I need some, some clarity on this, um. I think, um, okay. For example, on page fourteen on the chart there, um, this line here, working with nature, which is down there, um, does sound, it sounds a little vague to me. I'm not entirely sure, um, how. It doesn't sound very specific to me. And, um, then paired with enhanced ecosystems to conserve culturally important resources, that again, sounds like very, um, vague language that I think, um, will elicit greater action and greater purpose, um, if we can maybe, um, more, you know, focus that language a little more. What do, what do you guys mean by working with nature?
I would, I think that means taking advantage of maybe some of the naturally occurring benefits that are provided and not trying to do too much to change things, so sort of that kind of systems approach, um, but I, it definitely makes sense and maybe we could be more intentional with what that is trying to imply.
Right, okay. Um, and then the other culturally important or culturally significant, that kind of thing is all, um, and, um, cultural resources and practices. I'm, I'm not sure what that means. Cultural is such a very vague term. Um, and I, I feel like it might be secret for Native American, but if we, I don't know, um. I feel like we do need to say Native American if we mean, in fact, I think we need to say Native American, um, it probably would be beneficial if we talk about Native American practices. Um, but particularly if that's what culturally important means. Um, and it, it raises all kinds of, of questions if you're gonna say just very vaguely culturally important, because people are gonna wanna know which cultures, who's determining what's important. So I think again, some clarification of language there can really focus action and reduce, um, questions that might arise out of what kind of bias may occur there. Um, and again, it's down again in flood production, infrastructure upgrades for culturally significant resources. Well, that might make somebody feel bad if they do not get those upgrades, cause maybe, again, it's, well, who decides what's culturally significant? So we may wanna just tighten that language.
Okay.
Um. Under the, um, on page fifteen, um, uh, there's, there's a lot of bullet points under the climate vision, which is great. I just think that some of them could probably use, again, a little tightening in language. Ensure mobility across transportation modes, which is right there in the center, um. Uh, assuring mobility across transportation is, um, is maybe not the right wording. Um, it's a, I'm not sure exactly what that is. I, I kind of understand it, but, um, it's a little circular.
Okay.
If you know what I mean, like mobile and transportation, those, those are the same thing, so, yeah, anyway. Um, and then provide multiple benefits, the last, um, bullet, um. Is there, um, I think I kind of understand Bothell takes integrated climate actions that provide multiple benefits. Um, I think that is great, it's just a little too vague. I think maybe we could, um, um, maybe, uh, pull it out a little bit more, that benefit at this level, this level, and this level. Or, or just like scrap it, just take that line out, um, because it's, uh, it's almost too vague to be productive. Um. I wanna just note that I have a lot of smileys and exclamation points all over this, cause you guys did a great job. Um. Um, on page seventeen, I just had a question on policy CC 120. Um, and this isn't new, I'm noticing, um, so maybe it's not even worth bringing up. Unimproved public rights of way shall be preserved as to assure they are available in the future for bicycle improvements, um. And I noticed you guys didn't add this. I'm just realizing now as I look at this, you guys didn't add that in, um, so, um, yeah, don't worry about it, I'll, I'll get to the bottom of it myself. Um, yeah, thank you for being, um, so thorough with all of this. Um, I have a question about food systems, but are we there yet? I don't wanna keep going if I'm.
Uh, there, you mean the food systems components of the climate element? Yeah, anything related to the draft climate element we, or we can chat about?
Do you wanna put in chickens and other animals?
For which section?
For policies and food systems. We talk about expanding food security through economy to address climate impacts, um, es- essentially it's increasing community gardens and, um, encouraging support for farmer markets, activity centers, um, support food banks. All of this is really great, it's enhancing our community food systems and I, you know, as I was reading, I thought, should we include meat and chickens and, or is that, um, way out in left field?
I guess I'm, I'm a little confused what you mean by that. You mean like people having chickens at their house?
Uh-huh.
Uh, but as far as I know, the code already permits that, um, but we could highlight something about small-scale urban farming or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, since we're, you know, um, encouraging gardens, community gardens, maybe we could talk about, you know, small urban farms, um, cause I think this, this whole section I really, really appreciated and I was like, yeah, let's go for it. Um, I love the urban forest stuff, so thank you so, for working so hard on this, um. Yeah, just exclamation points and excitement all aboard, uh, all, all across the, the board. So thank you so much for your, for answering my questions and being so thorough on this.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other comments? Commissioner Gustafson?
Hi, yes. Thank you so much for the report. I am looking at the consultant report, which we noted bridges both the climate change and the natural environment elements. And I'm wondering if now is the right time to have a discussion about the no net loss standard that is cited as the guiding principle for mitigation if there are impacts of development on wetlands. And I think we had this discussion several times for the Canyon Park, EIS and so forth. But, um, I think it's worth getting into again. A lot of our community members are concerned about what kind of standard we use. Um, should I go into it right now, or should that wait?
I would love to have that conversation too. I think it's more natural environment section. I wanna make sure that we kind of exhausted any comments about the climate change portion first, but that's, um, definitely on the radar for discussion about natural environment. Are there any other, um, questions or things people have noticed about this climate um, change first portion of the packet? I will say, um, then that the, um, exhibit three chart, um, it's kind of confusing. The colors, um, are a callback, I think, to exhibit two, uh, in terms of the, whether they're adaptation or mitigation or a blend of both. And, um, either providing a definition of adaptation and mitigation, um, somewhere very explicitly. I know it's in the actual, um, image in exhibit two, but just calling that out um, as a reference in exhibit three or, um, grouping them, I'm, I'm unclear on why, um, why they're ranked, are they ranked? Are they grouped by, um, alphabet? I don't, I don't understand why they were ranked in the way they are. Um, or if they're not ranked, why were they, um, decided, why was it decided for them to be in this order? Um, it may be more helpful to have, um, subcategories for adaptation, mitigation, and both or blend, um, just to help the readability of that, um, that section. So that's one of the comments that I had kind of, um, found. Yes, Commissioner Robson?
Thank you so much. One note that I did have here, um, you mentioned higher performing strategies and it would be super helpful in this to just explain how we know, like where we're getting the information that these are higher performing. Um, yeah, that would, you know, just, that would be great to include. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, and just one last question that, or a comment, um, based on a couple of the last comments is, in terms of definitions, um, it's the, the report, which is great, starts off with adaptation, mitigation. And I agree that would be good to have definitions so the reader understands what that means. But then later on, it really talk, if, if the header is resilience, um, and it talks about how resilience includes adaptation methods, but I, I believe that there's, there's subtle differences between resiliency and adaptation, and it would be good to define that as well, if it's possible. And I could have missed the definition, so I apologize if I did, um, but I think it might help the reader a bit to understand the difference.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Robson?
Um, one thing that I was thinking about under sustainable transportation, um, we may, I don't know if it's necessary, but let me just, um, see what you guys think. It says encourage active transportation. I think a big part of this, um, hm, actually no, let me look at that. Um, what's active transportation?
Like biking and walking.
Okay, okay, I understand. Okay, um. We may want to add, just as part of our goals and strategies, um, as part, maybe as part of encouragement, I don't know if education would be a separate isolated element. It certainly goes with encouraging that education is part of it, but we may wanna draw that out, just an idea, because certainly education, um, is going to be a major factor in this. Um, and, uh, yeah, so it might just be a bullet point you wanna add. Good there? Thank you.
All right. If there are no more, um, items to discuss in this first section, I think that it'd be good to go into natural environment and then, um.
All right.
Yeah.
That's good. So some of the recommended priorities we have identified in terms of revisions to the natural environment element include, um, obviously we're moving the existing climate goals and policies that are really specific to climate change into the climate element. Um, reviewing the best available science and updating the element as appropriate. And that will also involve recognizing any code changes that might come out of that as well in the Bothell municipal code. Uh, making sure we're emphasizing interdepartmental review, because we know that things in the natural environment element also affect our stormwater division, for example, so making sure that they have a chance to review the goals and policies, and then reviewing the existing actions that are in the plan um, for potential inclusion in the implementation plan, uh, whether or not that means as they are, or revisions, adding new ones, removing ones that maybe have already, uh, been successful. We also wanna make sure we're revising all the mapping data as needed. We in the current planning division will provide updated wetlands and other critical area mapping to our JS department as projects come through, so we're constantly making sure the maps are up to date as we get that information. Um, obviously reviewing for consistency with any changes or updates at the state and federal agency level. Uh, we're viewing through an environmental justice and racial equity lens, as well as just generally reviewing content and language as we've been kind of reiterating over, uh, over and over, making sure that the language is up to date, modern, it's saying what we want it to say. And those are sort of the overall priorities for the natural environment element, but it sounds like there's some discussion that is desired, so I'm happy to field some questions.
Commissioner Gustafson, did you have, did you wanna start the conversation about?
Uh, yes, thank you, Vice Chair Curd, although I, I do believe you might be the best equipped to explain the standard and what the options might be.
Um, I'll leave that to staff, uh, but, um, the concept of no net loss, uh, do you wanna go into?
I guess I'd be curious, I guess I'd be curious to understand the goal of that discussion when it comes to the comprehensive plan versus the actual development regulations that get applied to projects. That would be helpful for me.
Certainly, um, if that's alright. So right now, the, both the consultant report and the recommended actions in the climate change element as it currently stands on page twenty-four refer to any potential damage to the environment from development needs to be mitigated using a no net loss standard, basically meaning bring it back the same way it was before. But there has been a lot of discussion that other standards might be better. And in page twenty-four, I think it refers to a equal or greater standard, which raises the bar a little bit. And I think a lot of advocates and organizations actually prefer a net positive impact standard, because the idea is not every mitigation project performs. So if you're setting up for no net loss, you might actually lose environmental benefits. So it's generally better to aim for a net positive impact standard to over, overcompensate. And since it's written down in our actions and policies right now, it seemed to me like the time to bring it up and perhaps debate this and see, well, are we going to perhaps talk with the shorelines board about this? Because it seems like something their community really cares about.
My understanding is we generally take direction from the Department of Ecology, because they are the ultimate people that approve our critical area ordinances, as well as our shoreline master plan, uh, language. Um, so that's something that I can discuss with our contacts at Department of Ecology and Department of Fish and Wildlife. Those are really the folks that we work with the most. Um, and my, based on just the scope of what we've been working on with the consultant, I would gather that that language. I would gather that that language update is coming from something at the state level. But that's certainly something we can take a look at for sure.
Yeah, I don't want to insert myself into the conversation. But it's bringing up another question that I have, which is, you know, we've gotten feedback over the last couple of years from Shorelines Board, and we've developed regulations around buffer widths and so forth. And there's discussions at Fish and Wildlife about changing best available science in the future about site potential tree heights. And there's a lot of like discussions about are the existing buffers that are, that individual jurisdictions use, are they consistent with each other across kind of time and space? So I'm wondering when, more of a general question, when state agencies update their frameworks or update their, you know, their concepts of what the best available science is, how does that filter down to individual jurisdictions? Is there like a window of opportunity for the state to get its text in a row to change best available science? And then it's dispersed to all jurisdictions during the comprehensive plan updates? Or if, you know, in two years, Fish and Wildlife says one thing, and then it's reviewed by ecology and then it's reviewed by, like it goes through all of the different state agencies, what happens to our comprehensive plan? Would that be a code amendment or a comprehensive plan amendment process that would have to be taken mid-plan?
That's a good question. I don't know if I have a full answer to that tonight. I know we've already been in contact with our representative at Fish and Wildlife about both the climate element and the natural environment element and the critical areas components. They did mention that there were some changes to best available science. So we've been working to make sure that we're consistent with those as of right now. In terms of moving forward in the future, we do have to update the critical areas ordinance and the shoreline master plan at a certain frequency. I think our next update to the SMP is in 2027. Critical areas ordinance, can't remember, I think it's on a similar timeline. We last updated it in 2019. And so anytime, my understanding is anytime we're updating code when it comes to the shoreline or critical areas or critical areas in the shoreline, that has to include a best available science review as a part of developing those. So that's part of that requirement to make sure as we're developing new regulations or revised regulations that we're ensuring that our best available science is up to date.
That's great.
That's the best, to my knowledge, answer I have in the moment.
Excellent, thank you. Are there any other comments or questions about this portion of the presentation so far? I have one comment or question that kind of spurred by what you were talking about. Wetland studies as they're done by consultants for development projects in the city. You mentioned that the city revises our internal maps about where the wetlands are because not every wetland is mapped. And so that's really interesting to me because as someone who is formerly a consultant in geologic sensitive areas, there is a tremendous amount of information contained in geotechnical reports for individual projects. And most jurisdictions don't have the capacity or the ability to categorize every single geotechnical report that comes in for projects. But I would imagine that it would be really interesting to note where or update our GIS maps for the city based on geotechnical, the presence or availability of geotechnical reports.
I don't know what in the geotechnical reports might get updated. I was speaking more to like wetlands and streams. My understanding is more of the geotechnical information that we update, we get from like DNR and other agencies as they're updating their mapping. We'll adopt it and integrate that into our plans. I would have to ask if there's anything that the development review engineers provide to the GIS team for updates. I'm not sure.
I'm just thinking that like if there are ancient landslides that are mapped that aren't reflected in, you know, statewide resolution maps here in the city, you know, a neighbor might want to know that their property may be affected by that. And without a central database of geotechnical reports, it's harder to make that data accessible to the general public. And there are cities like City of Seattle that do. They have a lot of resources, and I understand that there's a whole system built up around that that they have in place. But there are some jurisdictions that do have a record at least for geotechnical reports. And that could be something similar to the presence of wetland studies that could affect neighboring parcels and properties. So just a thought, and now is the time to bring it up? Are there any other comments about this section or shall we move on? I'm not seeing anything, so let's continue.
So next, we're just going to have a quick chat about parks. I really like all of our icons. We think they're super cute. This is the black and white one, and then this is the color one. So again, I had a good chat with Nick Stroop, our Parks Department Director, about some of the direction that he sees us going with the element. And a lot of this is almost kind of administrative in terms of, we really want to make sure it's really clear what belongs in the PROS element, the Parks, Rec and Open Space element versus the Parks section of the Capital Facilities element versus the Parks PROS Plan, which is basically like their strategic plan. The way that the element is now, it sort of looks and it sounds like from talking to Nick, they pretty much took the PROS Plan and put it in the element. So there's a lot of duplicative information, and it doesn't really make clear what the purpose of the element is and its relationship to these other documents and how they all kind of work together. So we might want to really clarify that relationship and make sure that what's in the element makes sense or what the purpose of the element does versus the Capital Facilities element really being about that kind of inventory facilities and the outlook in that 20-year span of the facilities we think we want or need versus the PROS Plan, which is more specific to, you know, their internal goals and policies that they update, I think it's every seven years, and then the implementing projects that come out of that. He also mentioned that the 2020 PROS Plan goals are really up to date in their opinion. So making sure that we're aligning the plan with those goals since these came five years after the last update. And then one area of increased focus for them moving forward is going to be really bringing back on board recreational planning and recreational programming. That's something my understanding we used to do more of, and we really want to bring that back. So that's something we want to make sure we integrate into the element. Another, again, interdepartmental coordination is top of mind for me with all of this. I want to make sure that every department that might have an impact on parks, whether that be, you know, facilities and maintenance or something, you know, anything in the planning department, that we're all kind of having eyes on this. Identifying any development regulation updates that might come out of this. And then as an implementation measure, the next iteration of the PROS Plan, which I believe needs to get going in 2026. And then like with all the sections, making sure we're reviewing this through an environmental justice lens and a racial equity lens and reviewing the content and language generally. So these are going to be two things that are a focus for all elements of the plan. And that's what I had for parks.
Any comments about the parks element or if you can remember back to the PROS Plan? I do remember that was a fantastic undertaking by the parks staff and commission, or committee. Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, they had a really fantastic outreach for that, and I think that we really want to honor and reflect that in the element. So that's kind of the main goal of the update for that. And then finally, shoreline master program. We really liked that this logo felt like it really was like, oh, yeah, shorelines. That's what that is. So not a huge lift here just because it was pretty recently updated, and the next update is not until 2027. But we do again want to make sure that we're reviewing everything through our racial equity toolkit and environmental justice and all of these things that we're reviewing all elements of the plan through. If there's climate-related policies that might relate to the SMP that aren't there now, we might think about that as well. And then I know there's some amendments that are pending currently. So obviously, once adopted, we would wrap those in to the element as well. So not a lot to say on the SMP element at this stage. Obviously, we'll update the look of it to match everything else too.
Any burning questions or comments about the SMP shoreline master program? Okay, not seeing any.
Well, then that is sort of the end of the element discussion. I just want to give some next steps. This is our flyer that will be going out citywide for the Day or Lifetime Open House. Sarah has been working really hard to put this together, and we're really excited about the graphics. We've got a crow in there, which can be a divisive topic, but we're big fans of the crows here at City Hall. So the goal is to gather feedback at the open house on all the topics that are related to the comprehensive plan. It's going to be a very wide range of options, come and go as you please. Again, ice cream and edible cookie dough. And again, and you can come when you want. It's designed so that you don't have to come at the beginning and stay. You can really come and leave as this fits your plans and your schedule. We're going to work to have a virtual conversion of this once the in-person one is over. So if you couldn't attend or didn't want to come in person, totally fine. We'll have an option for you there, so we'll have more information on that later. I'll be having this discussion about climate, natural environment, parks and shoreline with council on November 14th. So if you want to hear that discussion, that is when that is happening. And then again, just revisions based on feedback we get from the public, feedback we got tonight, and council on the elements moving forward. And that is all I have. Again, if you have any written feedback, please feel free to email me. You can email Sarah Frost or the Imagine Bothle email as well, and we can put all that together. So if there's any other comment or feedback or discussion, we can have that now. Or if you'd rather email me, also good.
Commissioner Jones?
Commissioner Jones, just want to thank staff again for just the firmness of these elements, the responsiveness of comments, and then also the aspirational nature of the work. It's just, it's really important to hire and probably to help staff.
I would echo those comments. I think this is a huge undertaking, and you're definitely listening and out in the community, which is awesome. The consultants are very thorough, and I hope that they're working well with the city.
We're lucky. We really like our consultant team, so.
That's awesome.
Having a lot of meetings isn't painful.
Great. Well, yeah, I'll just echo those comments by Commissioner Jones and say thank you for all your work. And thanks for all the help that you're getting too. It's really encouraging to see the city be so proactive about these. Okay.
Thank you.
Great, so moving along, are there any reports from staff?
I have none. I think no, no reports from staff.
Okay. Are there any reports from members this evening? Yes. Commissioner Gustafson?
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here. I was wondering if we might revisit some of the information that Director Greenspan gave us at last meeting about the updates to the timeline for de Tajo and the comprehensive plan. And this is because I received a question from a community member that stated, it sounds like the de Tajo amendments relating to the Drews proposal might get delayed until next year. So if that happens, would it make sense to go ahead with the middle housing amendments during 2023, given that we can get that crack at modifying that part of the code right now in 2023?
Thanks for that question. Happy to provide some clarity. So I'll be going to city council next week to provide them with an update on the projected timeline, anticipating that we will be receiving information that we need from the Drews as part of their application for the comp plan amendment so that we can move forward with their request as well as the middle housing proposal this year. We have set a fairly firm deadline for being able to receive that information and process it so that we can adhere to doing everything this year. The goal is to have a study session with city council on November 14th, if that's a Tuesday, or November 12th, if that's a Tuesday, whichever one of the Tuesday. And that would be on the de Tajo Drews proposal. I am very hopeful and optimistic that we will receive the information from the applicant, be able to review it, and then conduct that study session. Now, that will require an appearance here, probably on October 18th for your review, if we do receive that in time and we're able to process things internally. If not, it also could be November 1st. But I'm optimistic that we'll be able to meet either one of those dates. If that doesn't happen, I'll provide planning commission an update either on the 18th or in November. Because I agree, we want to make sure that we're moving forward with comprehensive plan amendments on an annual basis and looking at things collectively to look at their cumulative impact. And it would be great to be able to review both of these items concurrently and not be sort of held up any longer.
Thank you so much to the staff for all your hard work on these really important items.
Any other reports from members? Seeing none, any items to report to council? Also, seeing none. Well, moving along in the agenda, there's only one item left. I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Commissioner Gustafson moved to adjourn, thank you.
Do I have a second? Yes.
I second that movement to adjourn.
We've been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 The time is 7:07, and our meeting is adjourned. We'll see you next time on the 18th of October, I believe.